My opinion should be compensated at this point for the inadequacy of Munis to do the financial software that they were hired to do. I don't know what the contractual issue, the contract says, but in my opinion, this is a breach of contract. We, they sold us software that quite frankly just doesn't work. As you all know, there were issues with the tax bills. We've had issues with the utility bills since this program was upgraded. And we need help. Thank you.
Paula, if I can ask you to remain as well as Mr. Reynolds. So I'm aware that this issue has been, you know, brought up to staff and the appearance here tonight is an elevation of sorts. What is it that you would like for us to do?
I think we've got to really take a hard line with Munis, that they need to fix this. And I think we've got to look at our contract and I think we have to involve town council at this point because they are not honoring their obligations. As you all know, tax bills didn't go out on time because of Munis issues. Our utility bills have not gone out on time since we bought, since we upgraded the software. I don't know how we can continue to pay them and not be compensated as a community. This is absolutely ludicrous. So I am looking for the selectmen as the governing body of this town to involve town council to get, I don't know why people from Munis are not here. I don't know why they're not on site. We have, we have hundreds of tickets in with Munis. We, I alerted people of this issue before I had to go out for surgery. Before I went out for surgery, I alerted Munis to this issue. They thought it was fixed. It wasn't fixed. And I explained the urgency to be able to generate these bills and I can't. And, and I don't know what to do. I know Heather has, is aware of the issue. She has sent some, some emails, but the problem's not being escalated to the right people and it's not being fixed. And, and I don't know how we continue to pay support fees and, and, and how this can't be a breach and we should be compensated as a community.
Is there an alternative software?
I have found alternative software and prior to this upgrade, I had looked at a software called MuniLink, which I wanted to implement. And, but the problem is, is it doesn't interface directly with Munis. It would have to be run in parallel with Munis. It is capable of exporting a file that would then be imported into Munis. But the town, the treasurer collector didn't want to run two systems in parallel, which I understand. As for other, other softwares, I don't know. I was specifically looking for utility billing software because obviously that's where my focus is. But it, it just is not doing the job that it needs to do.
Please understand, Paula, I asked Paula to do this presentation, but yes, full support of the sewer commission. This has been going on for seven months now, just day after day after day. I'm, I'm over there too often.
No, daily and I appreciate that.
And it is, it's demoralizing.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's, that's the emotional issue. But as Paula said, we're concerned that we are not going to be able to pay our bills by the end of the fiscal year because if we don't, we're not going to get the revenue if the bills don't go out. It's that simple. And we have money and retained earnings, retained earnings, but we can't access that without a town meeting. So I'm looking for suggestions when it comes to that kind of thing. And certainly it, it's got to be escalated at Munis. If it isn't fixed tomorrow, which is always tomorrow, tomorrow, tomorrow for seven months now, it, it's got to be elevated at Munis. It, it has to be. It's, it's though they don't understand the severity of the situation. I mean, I, I, well, it's, it's a broken record at this point. I just can't believe that Munis releases software.
That cost a crazy amount of money. I mean, this stuff is.
I'm sure. I have no idea and I was paying a monthly fee for support, so.
Annual.
Annual.
And do you know at the, off the top of your head to the town, I know what the annual cost of Munis is?
It's around 60,000.
For license or support or both?
For maintenance and support, annual support.
Wow.
Can I?
Of course.
Yeah, I'm well aware of the issues. And that's been going on pre-live version of the migration. There were issues.
On the test.
Prior to, during the testing and training phase, we were forced to do the upgrade. We were going to be unsupported if we did not migrate to the live version, meaning we wouldn't have been able to issue W2s for employees. That's how, what point they put us at, at that stage. And there have been continual issues that with tickets that we discuss through email, weekly, at my weekly IT meetings and how many tickets there are outstanding, what's getting resolved, what they close without getting resolved as well, where we have to reopen new tickets. I've sent over 30 emails, I looked back demanding that this be escalated, that it be resolved. There is one person that has helped Paula out, but not to the point where things have gotten.
Paula has to beg for help, it seems like.
Yeah, I, I really do.
Beg for help.
You know, Peggy, once she finally stepped in.
Peggy is a.
Peggy went till as a Munis employee and once she finally stepped in, she has been more amenable to assisting, but not to, for example, I put the ticket in first thing this morning, I started work at 7:00 AM, put the ticket in right away and I don't think I heard back from her until after 11:00 AM. And at that point, she had, I had talked with someone at Munis, they said, and this is, it seems to me to be a rev problem. I used to do software, so I know a little bit about it. It seems to me to be a rev problem. They will do patches and when they apply that patch, any patches that they, or fixes that they did previously are lost. So to me, it's a, it's a rev problem that they're not, that when they do a, a new upgrade or new patch, they lose whatever they did before. And this may have been what happened this morning because I did finally, I had put in a ticket, didn't get a call back. Peggy said Joshua from Munis was going to contact me, never got contacted. Finally, at about noon time, I made my own calls. I called Dan Natereski, got the direct number from Munis, finally connected with a person after three different calls. And I spoke with a woman named Nicole and she said, well, your ready forms isn't up to date, so I'm going to upgrade your ready forms. And so she did that while I was on the phone and she said, okay, you know, now run your bills. And they did. The message I had been getting was unable to generate ready form documents. Then I, after she did the ready forms, it seemed like it went. It, I was able to print, the bills printed. And it wasn't until I started folding them, because I have to fold and stuff them myself and now I don't have an assistant to help and there's a thousand bills here. So I started, I started folding them and realized they didn't add up.
I want to turn to the board for questions or comments.
So I have a few comments and questions. You know, you all know that I was an employee here before, so I'm also familiar with the issues that we've had with Munis since the inception. Have we identified what the issue is yet? Do we know?
We still have. Seems to be a number of issues. So there's testing, training and the live version when different, when bills are generated, they go, go through those different phases before their actual bills are generated. Issues come up in all number of scenarios in each of those modules. I have requested, because we do intend to meet, request a meeting with Munis. I've requested all the issues from the beginning from Paula and from other staff that have had continual issues. So we can go to them with, these are the, the issues that we've been experiencing and how, how they should have been resolved, what the action should have been taken. But we've, it's, I feel like a broken record too. I've sent the same emails over and over requesting that this be fixed now, today. Like these bills should have been done weeks ago, month, a month ago.
A month ago.
So have we identified if there's any issues on our end? You know, the servers, everything is appropriate in terms of how it was implemented on our end?
According to Dan, Dan was one of the people that I asked, these are mostly Munis issues. This is an issue with their software and like the forms, how the programming is on.
I think they're ready for, for it to be released. And the other thing, it seems like, it seems like there's no one at Munis that is responsible for the whole picture.
Right, that's one.
It's very compartmentalized.
And that's been one of our complaints to them. We need a point person that can follow an issue all the way through and not get pointed to this department and that department and no one talk and no one.
Yeah, it's literally like the scarecrow in Wizard of Oz because it's the forms team or it's the utility billing team or it's ready forms or it's, and, and so you talk to different, and they said, oh, no, it's this person, department, this department. Bottom line is there's no point person that coordinates all of the departments to fix the issues. I will say Dan has been an advocate. He's been on the phone with Munis constantly. One of the things that we're finding is that when they do an upgrade, they'll do an upgrade in training, but not an upgrade in production. They'll apply a patch and, and like I said, then, then things revert, things get broken again. So I'm, I'm just at a loss and, and I think John put it right. It's demoralizing. I've never looked forward to surgery in my life, but I had to go out for two weeks. I was looking forward to it because it was a break from this craziness.
And she looked great when she came down.
Amanda, if I may, do you prefer selectman or selectwoman member for your title?
Selectman's fine.
Okay.
Selectwoman. The town that I've moved over to now, we, they implemented Munis around the same time period, but it's a different version. It's an older version and there are no issues. We don't have any of these same issues. No, they've had it for a little bit, a little longer. Is there an opportunity for us to look at going to a different version that might not have as many bugs?
There are many, we're in an older version, actually. We're in the 2000.
21.
21. So there are newer versions out there, so, and that's part of the internal discussion that I've had with finance director, like why aren't these patches and updates being done weekly? Why were we so far behind in our version and these patches being implemented more frequently? So we would be on the newer, newest version. And each time, I think this is how I understand it, you have to do that for each of those modules as well, the training, testing and.
But even when they do that, it seems like they undo something they previously did.
Right, like the issue today.
Right.
Was an issue that came up the last time.
Mm-hmm.
So the lack of dedicated tech support, someone who's actually paying attention to the full picture. Caesar, this seems up your alley.
Yeah, I was going to ask some questions, but go ahead. Selectman Emke, you go first.
First, I want to thank you for your diligence and persistence in dealing with this. I, I work in, for a company that provides enterprise software for pharmaceutical and biotech industry. Hearing this makes me sick to my stomach. We would never, ever, ever have this poor level of support. When we release new versions, we fix them. It sounds to me like the whole platform is, is just not stable, not robust. You should not need a patch every week, every, I mean, you should not have regression bugs. You should not have, you know, things should be stable. You should be able to update, do things on a test server before you go to production. I mean, this is just, this, the whole software sound, I mean, I've never seen it, but just what the stories I've heard, we would never, ever have this kind of situation with the company I work. I mean, so questions I have are, are other towns having similar, I know you mentioned Concord. Wait till they upgrade, they might have.
Yeah.
I mean, if you can't upgrade, I don't know, how many, how many versions did we skip in the upgrade?
We went from 11 to 21.
That's huge.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Why were we on 11 for so long?
And why do we jump to 21?
That was from, coming from them.
I mean, if we, even if we haven't been updating it that frequently, they should at least know that the software that they're putting out is good enough that we can make that jump. So that still is, doesn't really make sense to me.
I don't know how this works, but one option would be, maybe it's an option, I don't know. I know for us it would be to install the latest version and just migrate a database, not, not do a formal upgrade, but.
You also won't know the database is compatible with the new.
If they change schema, I don't, I mean, but they need to know, but at this point, I'm like, I don't have, I have zero confidence in this software even going forward.
The problem is, and you just hit the nail on the head, is what happened at the last billing, what, there were conversion migration issues on some accounts and accounts were credited erroneously or not, not, they were given credits for some, some reason that was unknown. Irrigation credits, which is a discount off your bill, were being applied as charges. There were a whole bunch of issues when they converted. And when they, they, I worked with Peggy and she identified all of these conversion issues and so we had to go back and undo all of those conversion issues. But what happened this time is it appears that I'm having the same problems again. So for example, and I'm not going to name anybody, but this account is showing an adjustment of $693.46. There is no adjustment for $693. This one is showing 1405. There is, so I can't even trust what's in the system. So it's extremely concerning and Myleene and I were on the phone on and off all day today, looking at various accounts, trying to figure things out. The problem with the 251 bills that are, math is wrong, is that in some cases they put the interest in, in some cases they didn't. But if you were to get the bill and you do the math on the bill, it doesn't add up. But in most cases, the amount due is correct, but the math is wrong, so the payment is wrong or the previous balance is wrong. So if you actually add it up, it's, it's wrong. So when I talked to Myleene, we, we went through a whole bunch of them today and she said, well, the amount due is correct, let's just send them. And then she called me back and said, no, we can't send them because we know they're wrong. We can't send them. And then as I kept going through them, I had to go through every bill one by one and, which is something I did last quarter. And I haven't done the math manually, which is what I did last quarter. But then we started seeing all of these adjustments and so we looked at some accounts and said, we don't know where that number's coming from.
I mean, it sounds like the immediate need is to get, get bills out so, so you can meet your, you know, get your payments for this fiscal year.
Yep.
And then, and then it's the whole, can we move away from Munis? What are our options?
Is there a manual? I know this is all very manual.
No, no.
The manual is up here.
Okay.
No, there is a very old version manual and it's really bits and pieces and I, and I belong to the, to the, there's numerous forums and I've been checking all these forums and, and to answer your question, do other communities have this problem? Yes. And I kind of snapshot everyone, every community that has a similar issue. I can tell you that the city of Pittsburgh had a problem. Their bills were not adding up. In fact, our town bill did not add up. And we actually had, the bill was less than it should have been. And so I called Missy in, in Pittsburgh. I said, what do you want me to pay? And she said, just pay what's on the bill. So I don't know what they did. They must have lost revenue because they weren't billing people accurately. I did, and I know processes were locking. She said numerous times she would go home crying. But I just checked with her before I went out and she said, things seem stable. So I don't know what they've done differently than we have, but I do know that they experienced similar problems.
So is this a web-based application or is it like a standalone program?
It's a, it's a web-based application.
So when they do their program, their updates, their patches, what's actually involved in that?
I can't answer that. That's an IT question.
It's too technical for me.
Yeah, okay. All right, this is my.
There are Munis servers on site.
Yeah.
I, I do know that.
Okay, so they are on our servers.
There are Munis servers here, yes.
So I wonder, like the real question that I'm wondering is, is it an issue with the software that they're putting out or do, is our server just not configured correctly?
I think it may be beneficial because, you know, we're, we're not going to resolve this tonight, but I think that we have some members of the board with relevant experience, specifically selectman NuZolo and selectman Emke.
And Tom Alonso, you're all three, you're a tech.
Yeah, he's a.
I think it would be helpful if there was some, you know, in coordination with the town manager, some direct engagement with this. And then secondly, you did request, I think, if the board is not in opposition, that we avail town council services to cemetery commission as soon as possible.
Sewer commission.
I can speak on that. I have spoken with town council about this. I don't want to go into contracting case that leads to potential litigation, but.
Then we should get an update in an executive session.
Mm-hmm.
So we need to scatter that at our next meeting and I think we should extend an invitation to the sewer commissioners as well as the sewer business manager to be there. Everyone in agreement with that approach?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay.
All right, that, that sounds good. Again, just really wanted to make you aware that you might run out of money.
What happens if that happens, Heather?
It's a deficit, I think I answered this question.
So it just gets, comes.
It's a deficit that affects your retained earnings.
Okay, so it will come out of retained earnings and then is it fixed at a future town meeting, at a special town meeting, or is it just deducted?
I think it would be at the close out of the fiscal year. It's what's submitted to the state.
Okay, okay. This has been a significant loss. I mean, I can tell you right now that we've lost, you know, eight to 10 in demands, but never mind the hours upon hours and I've lost my assistant in part because of this problem.
Paula, I sympathize. I mean, it's, I, I, I can relate to coming to work and being frustrated when computers don't work. You know, although I worked for the army for a while, there were many days where we were non-functional because their system was down. And you come in for like a week and you're like, want to pull your hair out because you can't do your job, not going to have any to pull. But, you know, I can't even imagine months of this.
Yep.
You know, that is incredibly taxing. I think demoralizing is, is probably the right word. So thank you for trooping through it, but, you know, I hear you and I think we can, we can see the most that we can do to be of assistance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any other communications from other boards? All right, we're going to go to our appointments this evening. We have a 710 appointment, application for Common Vic for BKK Group LLC doing businesses White Tie Cuisine located at 177 Mass Ave. I'll ask the applicants to come forward. We've received, or are they on Zoom? Are they on Zoom or are they in the room?
Nope, they're in the room.
Okay.
If you can come forward.
If you come forward, so if you are the applicants for BKK Group LLC, if you want to come to the podium. And what you want to do is state your name and address and the nature of this request. Kind of, we understand that you're looking to change the business, so just give us an overview of what you're trying to do and any history you have in the restaurant industry would be helpful.
Hey, can we start now?
Yes.
Okay, okay, pardon me if I have.
Can you say your name one more time?
Uh, my name?
Yes.
Is Nisha, you can call me Nisha.
Nisha.
Yes. Okay, pardon me if I made any mistake because I'm not a native speaker. Okay, do you have any questions about my, about our restaurant?
It would be good if you can just tell me generally, what are you trying to do with this business?
Okay, we, what do we call, we rent the restaurant and we changed the, we're going to change the name of the restaurant and.
Change the business and change the name in the restaurants, the BKK Group, Bangkok Hill, change new name in the White Tie Cuisine.
Yes. Yes.
Were you affiliated with, with Bangkok Hill or did you purchase the, the business?
Uh, pardon me?
Were you part of Bangkok Hill or did you buy the business?
We buy, we buy the company.
So are you changing the menu, updating the menu?
Yes.
It looks like you guys were just under construction, so you're remodeling as well?
Yeah, we also add the new menu and the old one is also including in our new menu as well.
Okay. All right, so in our packet, we have all the, we have all the application stuff. Is everything all set in here? Okay? Any other questions? Any questions from the board?
I just have one question. It's mostly from my own curiosity. Your hours of operation, say 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM?
11, yes.
Uh, what days of the week?
Seven days.
Seven, okay, that's what I was, just for my own future reference.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Now would be a good time to expand those business hours, by the way. If you think that there might be an occasion in which you're going to be open at 10, you may want to ask for more hours than you actually plan on operating. A lot of people who plan on being open from 11 to 10 are able to be open from like 10 to 11.
Hmm.
So it's an option. All right, any other questions?
No. But I will move to approve the Common Vic license from BKK Group LLC doing business as White Tie Cuisine located at 177 Massachusetts Ave.
Second.
Thank you. I do have one question. When do you open for business?
When?
When, tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
I can open now.
If the application has been approved, we will open now.
Okay. So for everyone listening at home, former Bangkok Hill located at 177 Mass Ave is now going to be White Tie Cuisine. I encourage you to check it out and we have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. The motion passes. Congratulations. So we will sign off on this. Do you usually make a copy, right?
Yes.
So we'll sign off on this and it'll be available tomorrow morning for you to come pick it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Definitely before 11. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Laser pen.
Yes.
I'm just going to pass this down now. Thanks. All right. We have some ratifications this evening. I'll turn to the town manager for the ratifications and I didn't see if we had a town manager report today.
No.
All right, and then we'll go straight to old business.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are three appointments I'm asking the board to ratify tonight, two for the seasonal cemetery labor positions and one seasonal lifeguard position. So we received approximately 55 applications for the seasonal cemetery labor positions and of those, only 14 met the minimum requirements and were extended interviews. The DPW director and cemetery superintendent interviewed six of the applicants. A seventh person was offered an interview, but did not show up. Of the remaining seven, five did not respond to the interview invite and two had scheduling conflicts. Out of those that were interviewed, Peter Schmidt and Charles Poole were offered the position and accepted. Peter Schmidt has prior experience in mowing, weed whacking, leaf blowing and is looking forward to the opportunity to expand his skills. His reference said that Pete was the most polite and professional student he's ever worked with and it was also said that he is a team player, hardworking and will stay on task. Charlie Poole has a number of years of experience with landscaping. He's familiar with spring and fall cleanup as well as maintenance, such as planting grass, weeding, raking and mulching. Charlie's references said that he's easygoing, a go-getter, has good judgment, is friendly and is a good communicator. I'm asking the board, if you want to take the, them all together or do you want me?
All together, it's good.
All right. Jared Bowser is a returning employee as a seasonal lifeguard and we're happy that he's returning for another season.
All right, we have a motion.
I move to ratify the town manager's appointment of seasonal lifeguard Jared Bowser and seasonal cemetery laborers Peter Schmidt and Charles Poole.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All right, as many as are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. The appointments are ratified.
Thank you.
You are welcome. All right, under old business, review disposal of surplus property policy, has all member, have members had, actually members have not had the opportunity, given that we have a new member?
I have, I've looked at it this afternoon.[1742.83]
Okay, okay. I don't know if we need to review, give an overview of what this is, but it's.
We did last week.
How to do our surplus property. Is there any other questions related to disposal of surplus supplies and equipment policy?
I don't have any.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the disposal of surplus property policy as updated.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All right, as many as are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. The motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, and then we're going to go quickly. Let's see, I did shoot you an email, but it was like right before we got here. All right, so we're going to do a brief review of the tax investigative report. I'm going to read off the executive summary and a couple highlights, and then, as noted, we will do a compilation in the morning and get this posted onto the town website for members to review. All members, no members have had the opportunity to review this yet, so they will be hearing it for the first time this evening. All right, in the course of the investigation, we sought to answer several questions. We identified kind of 10 core questions, and then we provided an executive summary. I will read tonight the executive summary. I think it's a combination of what all the questions are, and the executive summary really is identifying causation. So what I would ask is for all members to take the time, once we receive the composition or the compilation tomorrow, to take time to review and respond with any feedback, comments, things that you want to add. So this is the executive summary. As a note, the executive summary is essentially what gets added into the annual report. It's the one part of the document that becomes, are essentially our record of the whole thing, although we will provide all documentation that led to it, and then several things that were reviewed but not added into the report, I will seek to add them to the website. There are many, many documents, and not all of them can be squeezed in a way that they're readable in a PDF. Executive summary, and I have some colorful language in here. If you can just excuse me for a second. Spit out a breath, Matt. All right. 2023 started off on a bad footing for the overwhelming majority of property owners with homes at a butt Lake Whalen, Hickory Hills, and Lake Shirley, when those 429 property owners learned that their average tax bill increased by $3,590.64, while the 3,159 non-Lakefront property owners received an average 82 cent tax increase. The select board conducted an investigation to identify the causation of the substantial tax increases on what of property owners. The proximate causes for this situation are as follows. One, while the work that the principal assessor and board of assessors conducted to identify property values for FY '23 was technically allowable by Department of Revenue standards, it was incorrect. The pandemic of 2020 to 2022 dramatically changed the way that people in Massachusetts conduct business and immediately turned many homes into workspaces and offices. The ability for most professionals to work from anywhere with an internet connection led to many people choosing to leave urban communities to more suburban or rural communities. A critical part of the spread of COVID-19 has been proximity to others as its contagious disease spread through germs in the air. As a result, many people purchased homes outside of cities. The principal assessor and board of assessors in Lunenburg should have, upon identifying a .48 assessment to sales ratio for lakefront property, conducted more analysis to verify the accuracy of the information. They should have maximized the allowable time range to better consider that home sales during the peak of the pandemic were anomalous. They did not. Two, the assessor's office was plagued, in the view of many assessors, by years of bad data. They had a 27-year business relationship with RRG, an outside vendor that provided assessment services. In or around 2015, assessors began to question how well data was being collected and whether homes were being evaluated following building permits and sales. Assessors questioned whether or not commercial and personal property taxes were being done correctly by RRG. Assessors questioned whether cyclical inspections were actually occurring, and generally, assessors believed that the quality of services rendered had dramatically decreased. When the board of assessors hired a different company to provide personal property tax assessments, they realized a substantial increase in revenue, further reinforcing that they needed to change direction. The board of assessors believed that hiring a staff assessor rather than a company would result in a better data collection, and they worked with the town manager to create a new staff role. The town parted ways with RRG in about 2020 and hired Sue Burns, who worked from July 2020 to September 2021. Christine Kumar worked from early September 2021 to December 2021. Rena Suize worked from December 2021 to March 2022, and CJ Carroll was hired in March of 2022. Within the span of two and a half years, the town had five different principal assessors, principal or interim principal assessors. Three, CJ Carroll was qualified to perform the job he was hired to perform, but there were inadequate supervisory controls in place to verify that the work he was doing was correct and informed by experience. Young adults need jobs, and they have to get experience somewhere. It is acceptable for a town to hire someone with growth potential within the community, and given the tight labor market, hiring someone who hadn't worked as a principal assessor was not in and of itself problematic. However, aside from monitoring deadlines, the town manager did not have, nor was expected to have, relevant related experience, and trusted, without a more formal mentorship program in place, that CJ was being adequately mentored. More could have been done to retain a qualified assessor to provide oversight during CJ's first year of employment, as this is part of the definition of supervision and would have set the employee up for success. Neither human resources, nor the town manager, nor any member of the board of assessors identified the need for more professional oversight. Four, the board of assessors had two members that were in their first year of service and who had no relevant professional experience, and one long-term member with family responsibilities that limited his engagement on the board of assessors. The members of the board of assessors fully trusted the principal assessor to do his job correctly and provided minimal oversight. While they asked probing questions, they did not perceive themselves as being more or equally capable as the principal assessor. Five, the board of assessors did not have protocols in place to catch anomalies or significant variances in data. Had the board have known how dramatic the tax implication would have been, they likely would have paused the process to confirm an error in data and/or not approve the assessed values as provided. However, with little fuss or questions, they accepted the values provided to them, and they didn't understand that their signature on the final documentation was confirmatory rather than compulsory. Six, the fix to the problem highlights what the source of the problem ultimately was: bad data. The index map that groups similar properties together into like neighborhoods had not been updated in at least 15 years. It should have been updated every five years. The recognition that not all property in index one is alike, and that there are, in fact, three tiers of property within index one greatly contributed to homeowners receiving incorrect tax valuations for fiscal year 2023. And those are the general executive summary of the investigation. As you read the report, and I did email it, and it can be added to the drive, but there were some facts that were identified along the way, as well as the core questions at the investigation that we identified early on in the process and that we sought to answer, which we did get answers to them. All of them, for the most part, were, not all of them, but many of them were looking at whether or not the assessor was qualified, not qualified. But in the end, I think if you take, you know, the sixth and the seventh, kind of, seven final comments, if any of them had have changed, if there had been any variance to any one of those, we would have got a different result. But it was the combination of all of them. I think that that greatly contributed to the situation that we were in. So I know that there's a lot of interest in this. You know, I think it's important to, I know it's hard for some people to understand that you can not make a technical error but still make an error, and that really goes back to what an assessment of value is, that it is an opinion informed by data. There were several errors in the data, even as you looked at index one in this process. The homes that initially were identified as being qualified sales, several of them in the end were not. There was no substantial difference to the median assessment to sales ratio, even when you remove those properties that weren't qualified, but it further reinforced that not enough was done to get that, to get data as good as it could have been received. And I think that it also had, you know, in this process, I think I had to account for the reality that, you know, someone coming into a job roughly in March and leaving, you know, and then assessments are done in roughly November, December, that in that limited period of time, it's not enough to remedy all the previous issues. In the interview process, all of the assessors that were hired prior to CJ, all of them confirmed that they had concerns about the data, they were, they didn't think it was, had been updated, and a lot of things were missing. And even in the course of the investigation, when we reached out to the vendor to provide historical information that the vendor identified that he still had, it was never provided despite repeated requests. And so we were not able to go back to the 10-year history that we had hoped, and it was more limited. So as you can hear, my voice is kind of losing the air, so I'm going to stop talking for a bit. And again, I know that we will have more discussion on this at a future meeting, but are there any initial questions or comments?
No, I'll wait for the full discussion.
All right. Okay. Next on our agenda. Identify in-person interviews for upcoming appointments and reappointments. So this is with, every year when we go through the, we go through our upcoming appointments, if there are any boards or committees, or commissions, that any member would like for those members to all appear in front of us, let me word this differently. As we look at the list of who we're going to be appointing, we can opt to have members come meet with us, we can opt to not have them come meet with us. So if there's any boards or commissions on our list that members would like for all applicants to interview with us, please advise, and I'll go through them right now. We have the Agricultural Commission. I would like for members of the Agricultural Commission to come in for a reappointment. For Architectural Preservation District Commission, I would like existing members seeking reappointment to come in for an interview for the APDC. Conservation Commission. Any requests? Council on Aging. Cultural Council. Green Communities Committee. Historical Commission. I would like members of the Historical Commission to come in for an interview. Personnel Committee.
I would like the Personnel Committee to come in.
PAC, Public Access Cable. And then we will be correcting one term, it looks like. So I think you've got those ready?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we will advise. Do we have any minutes to approve today?
No.
No, any, we do have warrants, though. All right. First is going to be an accounts payable warrant. Can I use your pens?
Sure.
We have an accounts payable warrant in the amount of $214,941.72. I'm going to give you a stack. We have.
Thank you.
A payroll warrant in the amount of $1,077,545.40. We have an accounts payable warrant in the amount of $545,761.57. Any action items this evening?
Yes. I think these are items for future agendas. One is the Budget Task Force, to discuss that with the whole board. And I actually had a question about that. I have some material that I collected, you know, neighboring towns doing same sort of thing. Can I put that in the drive myself or should I send it to Annie to put in the drive?
Send it to Annie.
Okay. The second agenda item I have is ARPA. With the override passing, I believe we'll be getting the ARPA money back from the school.
Yep.
So I think our balance is going to be pretty significant, and I know it needs to be committed by the end of the year, so if we could take a look at that.
Absolutely. I will put them on for our next agenda. For the Budget Task Force, have you, this is going to hit, you know, I think the concept as previously presented is going to hit a couple different boards and committees as well.
Yep.
So this is, just to, you know, kind of explain it, this is an initial conversation, brainstorming with the select board.
Composition, scope, that, those sorts of things. I've seen, there's pretty similar composition, the ones I've seen. So far, it varies a bit in size, but in addition to having members from other boards and like superintendent, town manager, town, school, finance directors, some towns also include a couple members, a couple residents, so. And the size can vary. I've seen some fairly large, which may not necessarily be a good thing. There's a sweet spot somewhere in there. So basically, just to get the board's input on, I think it has to come from us, right, to form this, if I understand correctly, or the town manager. Other towns have had the town manager create this.
I think it would be in coordination with other boards and committees.
I mean, I've already heard of other people saying they'd be willing to volunteer from other, other boards, so.
Do you think that you will be able to create kind of just a draft for the purpose of discussion, like a draft kind of composition or scope slash charge?
Yeah, I think I can look at the ones I've found and kind of give an overview and maybe a merger, kind of a.
Yep.
Boil it down to something that resembles the picture across the board that I've seen.
Okay.
I think I've, I think I've found like four so far without looking too hard.
Okay.
So I'll try to have some, so we meet in June, right? So I'll try to have something, a couple slides or something for Annie to put in the drive.
All right. Any other action items? Committee reports. Select Board Policy Review. So this again is just a reminder that, you know, with, you know, this is a good marker that as we've just came out of an election, if there's board, if there's policies that we would like to review, and that last year we kind of did a structured review of several kind of key ones, but if there's any, you know, please advise, future meetings, we can put it on the agenda to discuss. All right, any other things not on the agenda that the board wishes to bring up for discussion tonight? We have a request. Caesar, are you available on Thursday afternoon to meet with a student?
Oh, yes, yes, I am.
We have a request from a student, and this is related to a civic project to do something along the lines of a, like a student election, and they provided an article from another community that was kind of an example, I think, of students voting to name a firetruck, some other things. So, you know, given that we have a charter, it's, it's, the initial concept as presented by the student is definitely going to hit a lot of elected boards as well as staff positions. So I offered to meet with the student and another member of the board, which will be Sekman NuZolo, this Thursday afternoon with the intent really just to walk through their concept, to better understand what their actual objectives are, given that school's going to end well before this will be fully developed, and to get a better idea of kind of what the next steps are. Also, you know, we don't run elections, so it would be helpful to kind of understand the kind of who will be running these things, you know, is there a cost associated with it? What is kind of the breadth of authority that they could be voting on? So there's just a lot of, I think, brainstorming things. It's a cool idea from a student, but again, you know, there's a bit of a, there's a lot of process behind it to better understand how do you make any part of it become real? I'm about at the end of my voice for the evening. So upcoming meetings, we're meeting on June the 4th. Again, this will be a reorganization of the select board during that time, and then we will have our regular June meetings on the 11th, excuse me, and on the 18th. Do you have any public comments this evening, starting with the town manager?
No, I just had a follow-up item, actually. Cruz Knight, did you or anyone respond to Mandy?
No, what was the result of the discussions?
We discussed it. We all agreed that we should do something along the lines of what we discussed. Annie reached out to me, and I. Annie reached out to me and I gave her just like a brief summary, bullet points of sort of what we came to as a board. And that was it. I don't really know where it went.
All right, Cruz Knight's tomorrow night.
Why don't we add it to the agenda?
It's tomorrow night.
No, 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 I know, but as far as like what the prize is really going to be.
They're, I think, doing the prize tomorrow night.
Yeah, yeah, but it's Selectmen for a Day. That's the prize, but what does that look?
What age did we decide?
Yeah, that was the thing that we never got answered, and that really depends on the age group. What age?
I think it could be open to all ages, we can figure out who wins.
I think so too.
Prize targeted towards them.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, if it's someone that's a little younger, maybe we could just have them read the, you know, open meeting law notice in the beginning of the meeting or something.
So, we can respond to Mandy and let Mandy know that we're on board and that once they select the winner, then we can kind of tailor it to the age group of the winner.
Yeah, I think that should be manageable.
All right. Okay. Oh, no one announced it tonight, but I think the override.
I was going to do it.
Okay.
But I just pulled it up.
No, he said the override, not the card.
Anyone call it on the override?
Oh.
It passed by until eighty-five votes?
Yeah, about six percent.
Okay. And I think there were some questions initially on some of the tallies, in the sense of some, some positions had like four thousand votes. I think there were questions on how that was possible if only fifteen hundred people voted.
I did not see that. Was that on a particular?
The sheets that were posted at TCP initially, and it said unofficial tally at the top, but they were posted on Facebook. I was actually going to ask what the process is for checking those numbers, because some of the numbers, sometimes the numbers were correct, but the tally was just wrong. Sometimes the numbers were wrong.
Yeah. Have the official results been posted? I saw that they posted it, but it was still, was it as unofficial? Yeah, I did notice, I noticed that there were some differences between what was initially posted, so.
It still says unofficial.
Was that corrected though?
What's on the town website?
Yep.
It was corrected.
Okay.
But I think going, I don't know what the process is. I don't know how those sheets are generated, if it's automatic or if somebody's spot checking, but it certainly would be easy, I mean, it, like, school committee was really like twenty-two hundred votes.
Really?
You just add the column, and you can tell it's not going to be twenty. I mean, so just to avoid, you know, people raising alarm or concern or anything, even though they're unofficial, I, even, we can do better than, than what was, what was posted, just simple check. I don't know if it's automatically generated or?
Yeah, the registrar voters through the town clerk's office knows that.
But I, I mean, credit has to be given where it's due. I think that the parents really, you know, I know that they stepped up, they heavily advocated. I think that at one point, they wavered a little bit on whether or not, how active of a campaign they wanted to have. But, you know, there really wasn't a, I mean, you have, the vocal opposition's always the quiet, you know, majority or half, that, you know, they don't have to be, you know, ostentatious in their opposition, but they're there. But I think that the parents, school committee members, I think were quite effective in mobilizing parents, concerned residents, in getting out the vote without encountering a very vocal and visible opposition, you know.
Well, it was on Facebook, you know it on Facebook, so maybe you just didn't see it.
I didn't see it, I didn't see it. So from my, in my life experience, which all of us who aren't on Facebook, I have a Facebook, I just don't log in. But all of us who aren't, you know, who don't actively use social media, you know, it wasn't very prominent in our lives.
Yeah. Well, on Facebook, I will say that there was a lot of debate, and it did get pretty heated at times. So it definitely was there, so.
All right. Any other town manager? I think we were during your public comment period. We just got one.
I have no public.
Any public comments from the public this evening? Mr. Passios, good to see you. Which UMass are you an alumni of?
Amherst.
The potty school, huh?
I was on the older end of the campus, not on the high rises. That's where all the big parties were. Dave Passios, fifty-six Whiting Street. I was approached by one of my neighbors today, and I hope this doesn't feed into the conversation you had earlier this evening about Munis, but he is seriously concerned because he no longer has a mortgage. So the mortgage company is not sending his tax bill directly to the town. He either mails or walks his check to Town Hall. This last tax bill, he chose to mail it. He is confident that he addressed it properly to the P.O. box in Boston. That was in early May. That check has still not cleared, and the town is showing him delinquent or will be delinquent. He's already had a conversation downstairs, and any late fees or anything will be backed out. But if this has something also to do with Munis with incoming tax revenue, we're in deep trouble if this is going to, if this continues. And, you know, I, what I wanted to say was that we're constantly putting out forest fires. You know, the tax debacle, as you gave the executive report today, is going to repeat itself if we continue down the road we've been going down for the last year plus. Desperation hiring is what I call it. Well, that's fine, there aren't qualified people as qualified as you'd like to have, so you settle for what you can get, but you have to support them. We've seen that, we saw that a few years ago even in parks, trying to get the rec program off the ground. You know, people were hired that had some decent background, but they were not supported. If this continues, we're just going to be chasing our tail for the next decade. And we're going to have real serious problems. Thank you.
Annie, thank you. We do have another public comment on Zoom. Looks like we have Mr. Bowen. No, I heard you say, can we hear you okay, but you're very low. Can you say that again?
Yeah, just a little bit better, hold on a second.
Yep, it is, it is better, just make sure you turn your TV down in the background.
Yeah, I have it down, sorry about that. It wasn't like TV, it was, it was my network connection in my office.
All right.
So, I'd just like to say that, I'm just going to tap Mr. Passios. He's correct, so I'm going to implement business, and I just wanted to say that you cannot tackle with pass. That is the worst thing to do, sometimes it requires you spend money on an entire rewrite. I will tell you that right now, plugins and so on and so forth. When it touches to any kind of Munis system that you have, if you pass, it kicks out, and then it's another pass, and another pass. The particular plugin doesn't do an update, or it doesn't have regular updates, and then it happens another pass, and another pass, and then it has serious delays. So I'm going to parrot Mr. Passios. That wasn't my intention of making my public comment, however, I just wanted to make a clarification of that, somebody that runs an internet business. So, my comment is actually, we got to the Cemetery Commissioner meeting this past week. Mr. Rogers had made a significant statement that he was looking for people and individuals in the community that he knows, as well as others, who would be more interested in providing more for the cemeteries, of which the Cemetery Commissioner benefited, they're not being able to do without tax. So, because my interests have been in Mr. Jeffries, I say, I asked for agenda, your board decided, because I was running for office, that for Cemetery Commissioner, that this would not be the appropriate time, that we should get more community support. I agree with you. But I think Mr. Rocky's statements that there are better methods, of which the Cemetery Commissioner stating that five oh one C three, which they're incorrect, because they have lots of misinformation to this information, but it's coming from the Commissioner, Ms. Yatsa, entirely advised by the Robert Dampf of Dave Doran, that five oh one C three is the organization of a cemetery corporation. It's not the five oh one thirteen. Now, for clarity, if the Commissioner just takes the time to even review that, they would see that there is actually valuable asset in having a cemetery corporation. However, the power of Ms. Yatsa was, we wouldn't be able to be on the board of a cemetery corporation, so we wouldn't have control. And if anybody knows, all they have to do is watch town meetings. Ms. Yatsa wants to be in control. Well, let's know what we want people for. What we want people for is to find the best asset, okay, at the least cost, to be able to develop the best product that we can have in our community. Well, obviously, they have eighty-seven thousand dollars, but they only have to pay. And Mr. Rogers was upset with that. Well, I encourage, Mr. Rogers happens to be my neighbor, goes over one sixty-two Hyatt Street, he's already four Hyatt. We kind of follow one of the same path. And I think that, you know, this is something that should be considered with regards to developing our cemeteries. I don't think it has to do with scaffolding, I don't think that it has to do with work ethic. I don't think it has to do with Insta-DVW, or it was better than one God. I don't believe that it has anything to do with that. I believe it has to do with a power country board who is interested in control and asking for more money. They have asked for over five hundred thousand dollars with the money in the last year for the cap update. They have continued to ask the town, give me money, give me money, give me money. But when I made the proposal that a cemetery corporation would be something, it would be something we looked at, and they said, oh, well, we can't look into that, we can't do it anymore. Yes, they can, they most certainly can. And the fact that they're going to parrot that to the community is a disservice to every person in this community, particularly the dead, who they basically say that, oh, we here represent at this feast of the former people of Rome, and their family. Oh, I'm sorry, but that's not what's going on. So, let's just get to the meat of the matter. The meat of the matter is this.
Well, Mr. Bowen, I want to, I do want to thank you for your comment this evening. Do you want to take another minute just to wrap it up?
Yes, I do, thank you, Mr. Jeffries. And you know, I just want to say, Mr. Jeffries, I'm sorry I have to walk away chairman for the next year, but I can understand why, the pressure is great, you know. It's time for somebody to take their shoes, as you mentioned, the way that I could do, will be right after office again in two thousand and twenty-five. So I think that, you know, it's a good, it's a good opportunity for somebody else to step in, and I think that it's an appropriate step for you, and I commend you. And I just wanted to say also, with that, with as far as the Cemetery is concerned, okay, if anybody has any link in that there's disinformation or misinformation, my email is john.jb.bowen@itcloud.com, and I would be able to answer all questions with regards to cemetery corporations. I'm chapter five oh one C thirteen, because I have spoken to consultants. I have spoken to the Cemetery Association of Massachusetts, who happens to be the audience, so that happens to be our former sheriff, Guy Lotus, in Worcester, okay? And there's a number of other good people there. So as far as I'm concerned, all I'm saying is, if you don't keep your options open and you don't find the resources necessary, we can't afford the money. And that's what the town is going to say, it's not affordable. Well, let's find other means that are affordable, and I think that this might be what you look into a little bit, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
All right, have a, have a good night. And, yeah, this comes to the end of our agenda anyway, so we're about to wish a good night to everyone. Are there any final public comments from anyone from the public this evening? Seeing none, any final public comments from the board? All right. Again, I want to thank everyone for their civic participation over the course of the month with town meeting, with an election. I know that, you know, whenever there's contentious things, people get really heated, but the key is to respect the will of the majority, even if you don't agree with the majority, but have respect for the democratic process that allows the majority to identify the path, the collective path ahead. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no, the time is now, eight twelve. We are adjourned for the evening. To those at home, have a wonderful evening. Again, Memorial Day Program this coming Monday at ten a.m. at the Veterans Memorial Park, right across from the Senior Council of Aging or Adult Activity Center. Have a wonderful evening.